We got item number fifty.
Okay.
This is...
This is the big item.
So I know people want to talk about this, so please come forward.
How many minutes? How many minutes are you going to give?
Uh, how many people are coming forward? We're gonna have one-minute rule. Important fact. Thank you. So yield, people can yield. Obviously, you have two.
Okay. Um, I'm Cynthia Johnson with Berkeley Fellowship of Unitary Universalists. And this is all. Um, and go into some other things. But first, I just want to say that we, in this brief moment, we have to remember too, why this is so significant. One of the reasons is that Japan has a new government. They're very secretive. They passed a secrecy act. So I want you to know that this is a really important thing. When they say that they haven't been monitored, how can we monitor? I mean, when they get and say that everything is safe, there has been no monitoring. But briefly, I just want to point out that the Peace and Justice Commission that meticulously recommended this meticulously researched and unanimously approved this resolution. It includes thirty references and eleven footnotes omitted to save your time. They are abbreviated tonight to fit on two pages. One quotes Robert Alvarez, former senior policy advisor and with the U.S. Department of Energy, happen to know him very well, Deputy Assistant Secretary for National Security and the Environment in the DOE. But anyway, um, okay, um, anyone else? Can someone else carry this on?
We done?
Yes, right here.
Okay.
Reactors operating.
Reactors operating for decades such as Fukushima have some of the largest concentrations of radioactivity on the planet. The spent fuel there contains at Fukushima three hundred and thirty-six million curies of long-lived radioactivity. A hundred and thirty-four million curies is cesium-137, eighty-five times the amount released at Chernobyl, nearly half the total amount released by all atmospheric nuclear weapons testing Chernobyl and worldwide plants to date. I'm an environmental engineer with a PhD in air quality control, and I would like you to pass this resolution tonight.
Thank you.
Well, this is some more information from the Peace and Justice Resolution Footnotes. The chair of PISI, the intergovernmental scientific organization of the, the main government, the governments include Canada, China, Japan, Korea, Russia, and United States, they wrote Fukushima Daiichi led to radionuclides released to the North Pacific. The long half-life radionuclides could endanger the marine ecosystem, including human health, through the food chain exposures. And it's important to monitor this radiation exposure level and assess the effects. And that's what the resolution is asking for. Don't be afraid to inform people what is going on with the release of the, of the radioactivity from Daiichi. The former Prime Minister of Japan said the accident at Fukushima Daiichi was the most severe accident in the history of mankind. Fairfax has passed this resolution, and Seattle is about to do so. But I hope Berkeley will do so too.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Toshiko Watanabe. I'm from Japan, and, uh, I'd like you to adopt the resolution as approved unanimously by all nine peace and justice commissioners, because those are, maybe you're very busy to see the Japanese newspapers, but these are very threatening news from Tokyo Gigi Press. Okay? Highest-ever radiation detected in Fukushima plant well. According to TEPCO, sixty-three thousand deciles of radioactive materials were measured per liter of groundwater in the well at Fukushima Number One on Monday, yesterday. The previous record was only sixty-seven deciles.
Thank you.
Three in the...
Thank you. If you want more time.
Hi, good evening. As many of you know, I spent thirteen years in the nuclear engineering department at Cal, so I'm very familiar with the construction of the reactor. And I, I'm not going to go for scare tactics or anything. The reactor was designed poorly, and also, the way it was built was very poor, and Japan cannot deal with the problem alone. I don't want to talk about what contamination or facial thing, that's not, I think, big part of the executive rate. But the biggest part of the story is Japan by itself is not capable to fix the problem. We need together our nations, we need together our states, our countries. It is a big problem. In fact, if it's not there towards, it surely could exceed the damage that was done by Chernobyl. And none of this are human errors, don't forget that, just as Chernobyl was. Chernobyl was chemical accident, not nuclear, but it ended up to be disaster. Thank you.
Hello, hello, I'm Nick Thaddeus, I'm a resident of Berkeley. I've been researching the Fukushima Daiichi nuclear accident for a year and a half, getting my information from government sources and nuclear industry sources. I can promise you, guarantee you, it's getting worse and worse, and it's not being done with the oil by TEPCO. They don't really have a plan. So for that reason, I urge you to adopt the resolution. But also, I'm aware of the concerns here, that you don't want to stir up people's fears needlessly, and I agree with that. There's been a lot of hysteria, and I think the only antidote for that is consistent, transparent monitoring. Let us know what's actually happening with the oil, water, food, and make the results available to people, so they don't have to worry. Thank you for your time.
Uh, hi, my name is Dan Marlin, I'm a longtime Berkeley resident, and I support the resolution. All of the points are important, but the one I'd like to address briefly is the final one involving, uh, a resolution to get more technical expertise on the scene. The stakes, the, the actual meltdown was a catastrophe, but without, um, being irresponsible in the use of language, an apocalypse is what's going to happen if there's a major, and this has been well documented, if there's a major accident in the removal of the fuel rods, or if there's another earthquake. The estimates are fourteen thousand times the amount of radiation that was released at Hiroshima, and the Japanese government is irresponsible. We need to support more international expertise.
Hi, I'm a Berkeley resident. The Japanese government has been refusing to take any help from outside, because they think they are capable to contain this accident, but they are not, they can't. The situation is deteriorating. That's why I want the UN to form the group with the experts and scientists to help this accident to be contained. As the Pacific Rim neighbor, I urge you to vote this resolution to show we are concerned and that the Japanese government know this problem is not only Japanese problem, but global problem. As a Japanese descendant myself, we rely on the, so much Japanese food from Japan. I need the monitoring of this food along with the seafood of the West Coast. And I'm very appreciative that the Berkeley passed the Free Nuclear Act. Please pass this resolution this time. Thank you.
My name is Holly Harvard. I have a statement from Dr. Mark Sapiers of Berkeley. He's the former acting health officer for Berkeley's Health Department, and he wrote, "I agree with the resolution that the ongoing Fukushima tragedy is of great importance to us all. A comprehensive international effort to eliminate the danger that Fukushima may grow into a worse capacity, a worse catastrophe is surely called for. I hope that the council will pass this resolution." Thank you.
Good evening, Stephen Alkstrand. As people have mentioned, this wasn't just a, um, a problem for Japan, it was a global problem. And we see how many people in Berkeley community have come out here expressing concern about the situation in Fukushima and how it affects us here in Berkeley. So passing this resolution will help educate people in understanding what the, what the potential threats are and, you know, what to say from what's isn't. The university here was, played a central role in the development of nuclear technology, and I believe that this city has responsibility, as it has done so in the past, to take a proactive approach in dealing with nuclear safety. So I hope that you, um, support us and approve this, um, resolution. Thank you.
George Lemon, Peace and Justice Commission. I'd like to speak directly to what we're asking you to do in the initial resolve. You know, we've had a lot of conversation in this chamber about what is appropriate ground for peace and justice resolutions to cover. It's hard for me to think of a better example of the kind of resolution that we should submit to you. The Pacific Shore is our backyard, and the ocean, Pacific Ocean is our lake. Japan is really our neighbor. The sea life that's being poisoned by the hundreds of tons of radioactive water a day is our diet. The proposal that we sent to you is supported by local island nations such as the Philippines. It urges the UN to work in a collaborative manner with the Japanese. Even though the government of Japan and TEPCO have completely failed to responsibly control this disaster, this resolution takes a very respectful, non-interventionary model. We'll be working together with, with other nations in the world and the Japanese, and I urge you to consider this resolution. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Julie T. Emmerich, and I speak and support the resolution to reduce Fukushima Daiichi nuclear reactors. Like many others, I believe this catastrophe is one of the greatest threats and greatest technological challenges ever to face our species and our planet. IKEA Martinua wrote that releasing the CCM-137 started Fukushima would, quote, "destroy the world environment. This is an issue of human survival," end quote. The CCM-137 is roughly eighty-five times the amount released at Chernobyl. We cannot afford to pretend this isn't affecting us on the rest West Coast, when there has been a twenty-five percent increase of babies born with thyroid disease in just one year. We are all jelly pigs for the most atrocious effects of this contamination. The UN should organize an independent assessment team, and our city council should inform the public of elevated risks and possible treatments for exposure. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ina Shapiro, and I'm a citizen of Berkeley and also one of the experienced victim of Chernobyl. I was born in Belarus, and what happened by, I was three years old when the accident happened, and by the age of seven, I developed a immune disease. Uh, for a whole year, I had to be hospitalized and had a bunch of infections, infection diseases in my body. I don't, do not wish for any child to experience this, and knowing according to Yabukon's book, that this, um, uh, cost of death caused twenty percent of our children to be healthy by the year of 2000. So since Fukushima is five to four times worse than Chernobyl, I believe that this could be unbelievable, um, cause on our children. I, as being a mother, I beg you for not putting my, myself as a parent in the same situation my parents were put, and move to the United States to run away from this situation.
Hello, thank you so much for staying so long. And my name is Zofica Danglais, and I've been living since end of late seventies, all this time, and, uh, in, uh, end of eighties, I saw all over Berkeley had, uh, nuclear-free Berkeley everywhere. So I said, wow, that's great. And then nineteen ninety-two, we started the plutonium free future to protest plutonium supplement from France to Japan. And then, so I, I feel I've been doing as much as I could, and then Fukushima happened. It's really devastating. It's so depressing. But I thought, oh, well, this is the life, so we just have to keep doing, you know, thanks to my grandchildren generation, and women, and everyone.
Thank you. Time's up. Thank you. That's coming, you're, your time is up.
And, uh, time is here?
No, no, your time is up.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. So anyway, um, uh, now I'm an American citizen. Now I'm an American citizen. So I'd like to bring up something that nobody mentioned, that is the, uh, United States government and the United States nuclear industry, which is, you know, totally connected, or, um, uh, read the Japanese nuclear industry development. So now, I really feel as an American citizen, I have to bring all this issue, you know, so I really appreciate that Berkeley City Council picked this up, you know, because this is now, it's really a world issue. So this time, instead of nuclear-free Berkeley, I like to put nuclear-free world.
Thank you.
All, all about it. And thank you so much.
I want to be clear, if someone yielded in the audience, I just didn't want to interrupt her, so she had two minutes. Yes, Paul.
Good evening, Paul Kielo-Hublak. This is really the issue that I came for tonight. The others came up. At the outbreak of Fukushima, all of my friends were asking, "What's up, Paul? What do you feel?" I felt unspeakable grief, and I didn't speak. This ocean that we are destroying right now runs through my veins. My grandfather, my grandfather's grandfather, my ancestors have lived on this ocean. They've navigated the ocean, they've lived on the ocean, they've eaten from the ocean. Currently, in Hawaii, I had never thought that there would be a day when I would look out into this ocean. I've never lived away from the Pacific Ocean, and had to face the fact that the entire ocean, the entire Pacific Ocean is on the verge of collapse. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Ariel Curtis. Um, I just wrote a little brief something. I'm in support of the resolution.
Right into the mic, so. There you go.
Thank you. Okay, radiation, you can't see it, smell it, or see it, and yet it can make you really sick, causing genetic disorders, birth defects, cancer, and death, especially at risk of children, elderly, and those with compromised immunity. TEPCO has had several accidents due to human error that they haven't been forthcoming with, and the Japanese government has done things like raise the number of radiation deciles that a human can safely be exposed to, rather than be honest to people and evacuate far-gone contaminated areas. Getting an international team of specialists to Fukushima is necessary. The new Japanese secrecy act will put more people at risk through information cover-up. It will be more difficult for us to be informed, and thus, international intervention is called for. Please support this and be a voice for the Japanese children and the children here as well. It is a human rights issue. Vote for this resolution. Thank you.
My name is Max Figari. I've been a commercial fisherman for several decades in North Pacific, and I believe I speak on behalf of all fishermen when I say to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Umi, and I'm a self-designated evacuer from Japan. And really simple things, my aunt was two of her fingernails are still bleeding because of due to the radiation, and we have a family member whose baby was born with the brain outside of the head. And why it is happening, because none of Japan or US can take care of this, none anymore. And we ask you to pass this resolution, because why? Because we lack data. We lack data for the remaining people in the population. We lack this information for contaminated areas like Hunter's Point. We lack this information in Santa Susana. We lack this information in Fukushima, and people can only do so much. And what happens is that if you pass this, then you're going to really answer to the concern of the people. You can sort the, you know, answer to the questions of the people, not to fear people with the fear. So, you know, please, support us.
Hi, um, those who minimize the risk here are basing their minimization on studies that were conducted by pro-nuke people. And they're also basing, those studies are based on the initial emissions, but the emissions are ongoing, and the emissions could get far, far worse. Dr. Sebastian Pueweil, President of German Society for Radiation Protection, former medical physicist at the National Institute of Cardiopulmonary Research, said that, he doesn't believe that the human race could become extinct from another disaster at Fukushima, but he's very pessimist about bringing the situation under control. The danger posed is enormous, he says. All the experts agree. Worst-case scenario, Tokyo would be completely evacuated. The consequences would affect the entire northern hemisphere. Now, there's the UNSC report, which was sent to you. I know we've sent you a lot of information.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody want to give me time? Um, okay, the guy in the back gives me time. Um, so, that report, um, was critiqued by physicians for social responsibility for different nations, including the USA of, of the PSR, and other physicians' associations that are Nobel Prize winners. And that report said the Fukushima nuclear disaster has to be considered an ongoing catastrophe, which requires constant evaluation of the cumulative extent of contamination, especially considering the long half-lives of radioisotopes like cesium-137 or strontium-90. And there are non-cancer health effects, such as cardiovascular disease, infertility, genetic mutations, and miscarriages. Now, the, the head of the nuclear engineering department of the Cal, Pierre Peterson, I heard an interview with him, which he said, if TEPCO, now TEPCO is only a maturity company, not qualified to do disaster mitigation like this, he said that if they continue going in the vein that they are, we've made multiple mistakes, that it, the cleanup could take millennia. That's what he said. Is my turn now?
You have more time.
Oh, I have more time, okay. What he also said, though, and what he thought that the ship were doing, is dumping all of that radioactive water into the ocean. Now, we know the ocean is vast, but it is finite. It's four hundred tons a day going into the ocean already, and he's talking about jumping all thousand, a real thousand tanks, um, that, that he's talking, it's just that, sorry, but that is, um, that would be quite irresponsible. So please pass this resolution. Um, it was meticulously researched. You have, um, you have a lot of information there. Thank you.
You yielded your, your minute.
I was, I thought I was yielding him, that's okay.
You yielded to her. No, you got two minutes. He yielded, and the guy in the back, you got two minutes. Yeah. If I have two or one? You have one. Will someone yield a minute?
Number four.
Wait, there's nobody, nobody yielding to you. Okay. Go ahead, sir. Uh, thank you. Okay. Um, I just want to lay out for you what could happen at Fukushima. I didn't want to talk about this. Uh, it's a bit unpleasant. If another earthquake strikes the plant, another magnitude eight or nine, everything could go. The spent fuel pool everyone's talking about could rain, they'll see if they can rain once they break. The buildings are already shattered, if any view of it, the pictures. Once those spent fuel pools drain, the, the fuel will melt down. Once the radiation goes up, the paper will leave the plant. And if the paper leaves the plant for any length of time, the whole plant is going. And we're talking about a disaster, it's hard to imagine, but that isn't the end of it. There's another nuclear plant seven miles away. If that plant goes, everything goes. Thank you. Sir, is there anybody else up this gentleman? Okay. You're the last figure, then.
My name is Hercules Morphopoulos.
Here it is.
Hi.
Right in the mic.
My name is Hercules Morphopoulos. I've been in Kensington since nineteen sixty. Dr. John Goffman has done a lot of research on radiation. There is no such thing as a safe dose, and it's cumulative. We cannot trust capitalism gone wild, governments in cahoots with, what does the Pope call it? Unrestrained capitalism. Political bodies have to give voice to the people that this is a dangerous thing, it changes the planet. We've got to end it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I am planning to support the, um, recommendation. One small change. Um, Tony, I really wish that we could solve this. See that heart where you say solve it? Well, I'm very worried about that. Um, initially, last week, when we, this came to us from Council of monitor, they had no, no references at all, and so we were, it was late in the night, in the evening, and it's a big topic, so we postponed it. And in the meantime, I had looked at the General Assembly Scientific Committee, and I looked at what their findings were, and it seemed to me like they were handling it. Well, they weren't, because, um, when you look a lot more deeply, and you look into the critique from the Physicians for Social Responsibility and other bodies, um, you see that, you know, just a couple of things that I would like to read. They're very respectful, I have to say. This scientific committee presents this annual report, they presented in October. The report reads, "No discernible increased incidence of radiation-related health effects are expected among exposed members. Has physicians and scientists concerned with the human right to health and the healthy environment?" These are people who've been on the ground. "We respectfully disagree. Scientific literature and current research in Fukushima give no justification for such optimistic presumptions. We appreciate their effort to evaluate the data. Maybe some of their use, their work will be useful." But their based, their findings are based on unclear assumptions, older assumptions. And there seems to be nothing wrong with having an independent committee that's scientifically qualified, actually pushing the envelope on this, because it's pretty serious. Um, there's, there are very possible, very possible more earthquakes that could happen. And I, I think it's very serious, having looked through all of this, I'm quite sobered, but I, I am recommending that we take one clause out, and that's the clause about the Public Health Department in the city of Berkeley, because we have had a twenty-five percent reduction in our funding. This is, this is the clause that says that we have to instruct our health department to research and inform the public, elevated risks from seafood, et cetera, et cetera. We're a small city with a public health department who is way overworked and overstretched. There's no way we're going to be able to do this. If it gets to the point where we're starting to see data about contamination, we're going to have to rely on the EPA. We're going to have to rely on all of our organizations to come together. come together to deal with this, but we, as a city, we simply cannot do that. So I'm going to make the motion that we support the recommendation, but removing that bit further resolved clause that instruct our health department.
Second.
Thank you.
Second, that's five people.
Great. I'm very glad to hear it.
Yeah.
How are we going to choose one glass?
Sure. She was allowed us. I, I want to make a couple of comments. First, the resolution really makes two recommendations, and the first one, as Councilmember Miles said, having an international body look into what happened is a very good one. I mean, the TEPCO messed up, and the Japanese government hasn't managed it very well, and it was a very serious accident, and has immense consequences, certainly in Japan and near environs. But there's a second piece, which was about, you know, what are the impacts in Berkeley? And there, I think, the data is not so clear. There has been extensive monitoring, they have seen some small amounts of activity from, you know, Fukushima, and it was correlated after a few months of the accident. It came over primarily in the air currents and washed down in the rain, and then they stopped seeing, it was at no detect levels, and was also at levels much lower than natural background radiation. So I think it's, to monitor it makes a lot of sense, to investigate whether there was any large amount of activity that actually got to our shores makes sense, and they monitored seafood, they monitored a lot of food products, and typically, they didn't see anything where it's like the one percent level of potassium forty, which is in most foods. Okay. So I really support what Councilmember Miles, I think we should go on record saying that there should be an independent commission, but I don't, I don't think we have the resources, and I don't think there's any real indication that there's a lot of danger. We can continue monitoring, if our department wants to do education, that's fine, but I don't think, and I also would be curious of what are the specific treatments for radiation exposure? I'm a scientist who worked a lot with nuclear detectors, and the only one I know is potassium iodine, and it only works on radioactive iodine, and doesn't help you on cesium. And cesium is probably the most dangerous isotope that you're going to get from a reactor. So I, I think we also don't want to give people false beliefs that there's a magic bullet that can protect you from radiation.
Councilmember Capitelli.
Yeah, I was, I guess, one of the five seconders of the motion, and I appreciate you letting up on our health department. I was going to ask the city manager whether we have the resources and actually even the capability of fulfilling this, this second resolve, but I'm wondering if we could include it to the degree that we say that the city council, the council of the city of Berkeley requests that the state department of health do these things, because I think that, it's only a request, obviously, but it seems to me it's something that is definitely in their purview.
Fine.
And they should be informing the entire state. So I would suggest that the second resolve be, be a further resolved, the council, the city of Berkeley requests that the California Department of Health, and then leave the resolution.
Okay, and then research and inform.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you accept that?
Yes, I do.
Let's see, the five seconders, do they...
Okay, I'm very much in support of Councilmember Miles' amendment. I was actually thinking along the same lines. I think it's very important to monitor, and I think that, you know, this, the UN commission is a very, very good idea. I want to point out that the item actually says fiscal impacts, none, and that if, in fact, we had passed the clause regarding our health department, the fiscal impacts would have been huge.
Yeah.
And, so, that's misleading, and I think we all need to be very, very cognizant of the fact that every time we make a request, there are financial implications, usually. So I'm going to support the motion.
Well, I seconded it.
Yeah, you did. Councilmember Anderson. Councilwoman Anderson?
Yeah, I'm certainly going to support the, the motion. I guess if you live long enough, you collect stories. I'm gonna tell you one. I'm gonna tell you why nineteen seventy-nine was the last time I read anything George S. Will ever wrote. At that time, The China Syndrome came out, the movie The China Syndrome, about a meltdown in a plant in, in California. George Will wrote this scathing and scurrilous article condemning Michael Douglas and Jane Fonda and the whole Hollywood industry for raising such, such fears of an event that could never, never happen. Two days later, Three Mile Island happened, and we had a meltdown there. And I'm telling you, people in Philadelphia were close to ninety miles away from Harrisburg and Three Mile Island, but people were getting out of Dodge, because the cloud was blowing this way, and they had no real answers, and the owners of the plants fed us like they do mushrooms, they keep you in the dark and feed you crap. And so, that's, that's, was a big area of suspicion, of government and industry collaboration in, and even journalists, so-called journalists, jumping on the bandwagon with their right-wing rhetoric, reporting anything but what was actually happening. So to me, this is kind of a rerun of this. We got the industry and those associated with it reassuring us that none of these terrible things can come to pass, but at the same time, we have living proof, you know, that these things, with their half-lives of, some of the life expectancy of people in this room, you know, are a real danger, and they ought to be investigated. And, you know, you know, we always get this notion that we always had to go it alone, and we have one health department, and we can't afford to do better than that. But these are situations that affect cities and municipalities and states all up and down the West Coast, you know. With some initiative and some organizing, we might be able to get a critical mass of people that are concerned enough about this and voiceless to their representatives, so that something doesn't get done, and we don't kick the can down the road for budgetary reasons, when we could be doing other things as well. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Warrington.
I think I've heard various discussions of this proposal over the last few weeks, and I think, you know, tonight, what we're seeing is an affirmation that the work of the environmental activists, the work of our Japanese citizens, and people of many ethnicities, working to educate people about this nightmarish situation is paying off in, you know, actual public support for this step by the city of Berkeley. I think it's really important to include in our comments that in voting for this item, we are not, we are not attacking the government of Japan, this, this is not a statement against the Japanese government. This is a statement of bringing the resources and skills and money of the international community to help the people of Japan and the Japanese community and Japanese government to address one of the biggest environmental disasters of our lifetime. It's not about blaming the government of Japan or the company that's there, it's about getting the resources to address this calamity and getting an international effort. And, you know, we, we would do this, I, I would, I hope people around the world would do this if this happened in the United States, and I'm, I'm thrilled that people here in the United States are willing to do it, to support the people of Japan and all the people who are affected by this in any country. So thank you very much to everyone in the community who brought this forward to us and helped to give us so, I mean, if you look through all the different emails and all the different replies to the East Bay Express story and the voluminous information we received in our supplemental packet, there's a massive amount of information, scientific information, health information, health professionals, scientific professionals, and just wonderful, good-hearted and good-minded people. So thank you to everybody who helped get this to us and get us ready to vote in support of this action tonight. Thank you.
I would also like to echo some of the issues that people have stated, and this is an important issue, and I'm glad we are taking a stand, and I'm also very appreciative of the fact that Councilmember Capitelli has made the amendment that he did, because it is appropriate for the state to look at this. This is a state problem, the state health department should be involved in this, so I don't think there's an objection to us all being voted eye on this. Is that my correct? Okay, we pass this unanimously. We now go to our last item of the evening, which is item number fifty-two, and I'm going to step out for a moment.
Thank you. We have one more item left, and that's Councilmember Aguirre's item, the referral to the city manager on the exemption of fire damaged buildings, the crux of which seems to be that when the property is destroyed, the newly constructed units are not subject to rent control if they had been before, and displaced tenants are ineligible for assistance under relocation ordinance, and...